Morning, y'all.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, it's the first time. Thank you so much for having us over this morning. This is a really exciting update we'll be providing, y'all. We've spent several months, actually over a year, getting to this point. I'll be joined today by Ryan Robinson, our awesome Austin city demographer. My name is John Lawler. I'm the Census Program Manager for Travis County, City of Austin. But let's about me. Let's get into the meat of this presentation. How do I skip on this thing, by the way? Is there a way to control this? Oh, it has to come up. All right. That's not it. Well, while they're pulling that up, y'all, here's what we're going to get into today. We've got kind of a four-point presentation. We're going to talk about the general importance of the census, which I'm sure most of y'all are already aware about. We're getting into what we've done so far. We'll be talking about kind of what the strategic plan is we've landed on as a local effort. And then we're going to be finishing up with some really cool tools that I don't know how much time y'all have to get into because I'm sure y'all would love to nerd out over them, but we've got some neat mapping tools, a new website we can get into. So really, I'll leave that part up to y'all as much as y'all want to get into that. But before I go any further, Ryan, you want to jump in?
Sure, absolutely. I am Ryan Robinson, planning and zoning. Before I start, I want to say a big, big thank you to Mayor and Council for funding this effort, being generous in funding the awesome John Lawler in that position, and then the other money that we will use for matching and for spending. And then a special shout-out to City Attorney Morgan, who has had to work kind of that attorney magic behind the scenes for us, and she's done some heavy lifting for the effort. So thank you very, very much for that. So clearly, the census is crucial. It is a very difficult task to count every single person in the country every 10 years. That task will be probably more daunting than ever because of a variety of reasons, but why is it so important? It's because of federal money, right? First and foremost, the distribution of, and you can find a couple of different numbers out there, but 800 billion is sort of the current, most frequently encountered number. And that money is distributed to local entities annually based on the decennial figure and then updated with population estimates each year. Of course, reapportionment of congressional districts among the states. And then we are, as a state, expected to gain three seats. Redistricting of everything out there, state, House, Senate, legislative, other districts, of course, our own council districts. That will be an exciting endeavor. Travis County Commissioners Court. And let's talk a little bit about where that 800 billion goes. And I'm going to just list, I think it's impressive just to go through these. Medicaid, Medicare Part B, Children's Health Insurance Program, right? You know, that is CHIP. Grants to local school districts, Title I. SNAP, highway and public transit programs. And by the way, this is just tip of the iceberg. And if you're interested, I can give you the exhaustive listing of where all this money goes. But we also think this is one of the most important selling points for us, is to convince people and educate them on just how important it is. Because, of course, the recipients for these very programs, Head Start is my own personal favorite, they're the very individuals who are difficult to enumerate, hard to count. We're going to get into that in detail in a moment. Programs for the elderly and crime victim assistance. So the list is long, it's varied, and it's in the final substance of use, prevention and treatment. So that's a simple map of states. Texas is the only state poised to gain three seats, and that's because of all of the population growth that's occurred in the state. 20% of population growth since 2010 has occurred in the state of Texas. All right. Who are the hard-to-count? And we're going to go through a listing. For sure, Austin Travis County has got large numbers of these hard-to-count people. First and foremost, is young children. And this is a known, difficult-to-count group, but I've never heard a good answer as to why. I think it's associated probably with school age. The folks just think that, you know, the child's not going to start school yet, so maybe we don't count them, maybe in the case of an infant. But for a variety of reasons, these are very, this is a hard-to-count group. And so we pay a lot of attention to it. We try and remind people all the time, count everyone in the household. College students, this makes a little bit more sense. There are, of course, in the case of Austin Travis County, almost 135,000 of those individuals in the city and county. That, to me, is sort of an information campaign. We've also got great benefit of universities and colleges have email connectedness like we never had back when the earth was cooling and I was going to college. So it's basically, you know, where do I count myself? And we come up with different techniques, but it's, you know, when your day is done on April 1, that's where you should count yourself. Not at your parents' house in Houston or Dallas, but that's kind of an educational campaign. Of course, immigrants and foreign-born and refugees, you can begin to see the overlap, right? Young children in immigrant households, those are very difficult to count. Another big overlap group, non-English-speaking residents who may be linguistically isolated. Again, tip of the iceberg, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Spanish. This city is absolutely blessed to have really, really great language folks, and they've been weighing in with us on this. Renters, right? Recent movers, the highly mobile, the newly arrived. I mean, that, you know, if that doesn't sum up Austin, you know, I don't know what does. I mean, we're so, we're the number-one MSA in the country in terms of migration adding to our population in the last 10 years. Households of color, the homeless, by definition, hard to find and count. Complete Count Committee core member Bruce Elfant, this is one of his personal areas of focus. The elderly, aged, LGBTQ, the disabled, physically and mental, and then finally, just low-income households and the very poor. And again, you can see the enormous amount of overlap in these groups, and this is kind of my attempt, it's not a perfect diagram, but you begin to see that there's lots of overlap and we're focused on that. All right, this is a map from Census 2010. It's mail-back participation rates. The darker the blue, the higher the participation rate was. This doesn't mean who was counted or who was missed, but it was sort of who was able to send back to the Bureau their paper questionnaire. And so I'm going to flip the colors. I'm going to go from the dark blue being response to we're going to highlight those areas that did not respond. Again, this is not necessarily who was undercounted, but it's certainly where the undercount lives. And the Census Bureau, once they receive the responses, in this case from 2010 from paper, this time around, we're going to have online responses, which I think is going to be a huge benefit, then they do something called non-response follow-up. That will begin to happen in May, and June, and across the summer, and that's the knock at the door. And that's probably what we're most concerned about, because in this environment, we are concerned that people are not going to open their doors generously to any kind of knock, and so we're going to try and head that off. And again, John mentioned some really, really cool cartographic analysis that we've been assisted with with folks from Open Austin, and John will talk about that in a second. But this is just to sort of give you the lay of the land. In my opinion, it's not so much, I don't think it's a mystery where the hard-to-count are. The challenge is, how do we message? How do we convince folks that are probably skeptical and a little worried? How do we convince them that this is important and they need to be counted? That may be the end of my slides. I'm going to hand it over to you, John Lawler.
Great, awesome. See why I consider this guy awesome? Every time I present with him, I hear a new interesting factoid about Travis County and population growth. Like, I'd never heard that Texas had such a huge share of the population growth across the country as a whole. One of the other interesting things I heard from Ryan recently was about how we were having to split census tracts now. We're one of the few counties in the United States or Texas.
And even renumber them across the, a lot of people's... Excuse me, a lot of people split them, but we were singular in how many splits and how we had to renumber our census tracts. Got a little fun fact.
So we're just, this is a very unique time in our country, but then also just locally, our population growth is just astounding.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make a really quick comment when Ryan was going through the list of Austin area populations and communities at risk for an undercount. It's very obvious to all of us that these are typically and generally the most vulnerable of our residents, of the communities in our community, but they also have the most to gain.
Absolutely.
By being counted. And so when you're talking about an information campaign, to the extent that we can reach them and message it, I'm sure that that would be part of the message. You truly, you and your children truly have the most to gain if you happen to be in any one or multiple of these categories.
I swear, y'all, we did not put the council member up to provide that beautiful segue for this part of the presentation, but you're absolutely right. And that is the investigation that we've been performing over the last couple of months is identifying those critical messaging topics from the community. But let's jump into this, because I know y'all have a lot to go over today. The story so far, it was a long, long time ago, October 2018. Y'all, the city and Travis County decided to come together and fund a Census Program Manager role, which I now have the real privilege to get to serve in. Shortly after that, there was the first meeting of the Austin Travis County Complete Count Committee. What the heck is a Complete Count Committee? Well, it's an acronym that I never want to hear ever again, CCC. CCC is a model that the Census Bureau uses across the country. So Portland's got one, Tallahassee's got one. I don't think my hometown of La Porte has one, but there're CCCs all over the country, and that is a model that we started with. And as part of that model, they wanted us to form subcommittees, so we had these very broad-based subcommittees, like business, community-based organizing, government, very mile-wide, inch-deep. So it was really great at bringing folks to the table, but as we started to get more and more into this program, it became apparent that we were going to have to be a little bit more inch-wide, mile-deep in approach, but we were actually going to start to get results. So with that said, I came on board in August of this past year. Shortly after that, y'all here at the city funded $200,000, which the County Commissioners Court matched that $200,000 investment. So with that $400,000, we have effectively put that in a lockbox off in the distance because we did not want to tap into that, because similar to an electoral campaign, we wanted to save all those dollars for the get-out-the-vote or get-out-the-count part of this campaign, because those dollars were going to be so useful going door-to-door and having targeted campaigns. Now, since then, we formed a strategic plan as well, which I'll go over in just a minute. And part of that strategic plan was identifying that we needed to create these inch-wide, mile-deep verticals, right? So these groups that were focused specifically on those largest hard-to-count communities here in Austin. So with Ryan's help, we identified the five largest hard-to-count communities, and then with the help of folks in this room, at the county, and across the city, we've now started to form those different community CCCs. Also in December, we partnered with Hayes and Williamson County, and now with the five other counties here in the region, to have a regional media plan. That was in part just because of the practical realities that if we were to ever buy a TV commercial, if we were to ever try to have a large-scale digital campaign, just by the very nature of us being a majority of the region's population in Travis County, and definitely the largest share of the hard-to-count population, it was going to be a regional media plan. So why not go ahead and work with those other county CCCs as they were forming, so that way they could leverage any assets that we developed? And January of this year already, our community CCCs have been meeting, they've been forming, they're starting to have creative sessions to nail down specific digital ads and marketing campaigns they would like to deploy within their communities. Similarly, some of them have actually gone and asked for funds from the statewide Texas Counts Campaign, so that way they could fund their own work within their community. Something else, I'm really excited that happened was our southeast Travis County CCC was formed. That was under the leadership of Constable George Morales and Commissioner Margaret Gomez. And so what they kind of said was, look, it's really tough for us to try to organize countywide, a population as diverse and large as Hispanic-Latino population, we're going to focus on our part of the county, where we know these neighborhoods, know these communities, know the nonprofits we can work with, so we can get out the count into the undercounted populations. Now, moving forward, timeline for success, what we've been trying to do is finalize these digital assets that we'd eventually like to deploy in a targeted media campaign, and then we've also been trying to support the development of these community CCCs as needed. Some of our subcommittees have kind of, you know, evolved off. They're not as active as they once were. That's okay, because a lot of those folks who are actually on those subcommittees have stayed involved, maybe through a community CCC or another individual effort. This month, we're going to start to try to launch our field campaigns and actually publish Austin Travis County-specific outreach materials with some of those messaging themes you were describing, council member. In March, we'll start our regional digital media ads, which I can dive more into exactly how kind of crazy cool that can get, where how specific we can hone in on a message on a specific neighborhood block. And then for the fifth weekend of March, which there are five Sundays in March, this is an idea that actually one of the folks who are at Foundation Communities came up with while we were in a community-based organizing subcommittee meeting. Oftentimes, locally, when a, some churches, when there's a fifth Sunday in the month, they will go out into the community. They won't actually come into their church to have their service. Instead, it's a day of service. And so one of the ideas was, is what if we had a fifth Sunday sometime during our census campaign that we could try to brand as a weekend of service or a weekend of census activities? Lo and behold, turns out there's a fifth Sunday in the month of March. And so what we're trying to say is, rather than April 1, which also happens to be April Fool's Day, you know, and also falls in the middle of a week, why don't we take this fifth weekend of March, which will be, you know, two weeks right after these postcards are being mailed out to folks, and have that be the time? If your neighborhood association wants to have a potluck, a block party, or whatever it may be focused on the census, do it that weekend. Do it that Sunday, do it that Saturday. We, as a county-city campaign, can kind of step in and provide resources. April through July, that will be the follow-up by the census that Ryan described. So again, and this is critical, March 12 is when the postcards will start to go out to folks' homes with their online digital ID to take the census. You know, Ryan, you know, talks about this effort in very positive terms of this new online method. I'm frankly concerned in some ways, because for some folks, that will be a help being able to take it online, but for others, it will not. And we got to make sure that we provide resources so folks who, you know, don't necessarily have the means to take it online, will be able to take advantage of that. So throughout that couple of weeks of March, as folks get those postcards, and this was actually an idea of Quincy Dunlap at the Urban League, was we don't need to, you know, concern ourselves so much with trying to remind folks to save those postcards. We thought for a while, maybe that would be part of our mail campaign. Hey, when you get this postcard, don't throw it away. It's really important. Instead, what we can do is just have folks call in or go online, and they can have the Census Bureau provide that unique ID if they answer a few questions. So really now, the task in front of us is not, you know, trying to concern ourselves with saving that postcard, but deploying those resources out there, that technology, so folks, regardless of whether or not they have that unique ID, can take the census. And then also really cool in this role is that in August and September, there was baked-in two months for evaluation. So this is the first we've done a census effort of this size or scale here in this community, and there's also been some very interesting lessons learned already in terms of how the city and county can work together and maximize their partnership. And so I think the idea is, is that this role would then bacon some of these lessons learned, mistakes made, opportunities missed, challenges maybe not foreseen, and wrapping those together so that next time the city and county takes on something like this, there might be some lessons in there. So real quick, here's our strategic plan. You've already heard me mention certain pieces of it, but, you know, the institutional approach was the CCC. That was bringing in folks like the city, the county, governmental entities, folks that were already going to largely be participating in the census or getting out the word about it. But when we talk about the folks who are hard-to-count, oftentimes, they are distant from institutions, or they are right on the edge in terms of having to add one more thing to their plate. And so when we started to think about how those institutional strategies may or may not work on this campaign, we realized we'd have to take a different approach, and that's our grassroots strategy. So then the bedrock of our grassroots strategy are those community CCCs that have formed. The third part here is our media strategy. We're very fortunate here in Austin Travis County to have the media partners we have. They have stepped up tremendously and said, whatever you need, let us know. All the different media partners are saying that they recognize how important this is, you know, to the civics and the economy of Austin Travis County, and so all those TV stations, radio stations, publications are saying, just let us know how we can get the word out. Here's an example of the different subcommittees that we've got through the CCC. Here are some examples of the different community CCCs. We've got these, I'm really excited about specifically, our Asian-American CCC. They were the example that we followed. They formed organically last year, and watching their success made so much sense as to how we were going to need to evolve as a campaign to actually get out the word. And since then, the Black African-American CCC has formed. Big thank you to Councilmember Harper-Madison, who stepped out. Her staff, Neil in particular, has been really helping lead that with Miriam from the African-American Quality of Life Commission. The Hispanic Latino CCC has formed. That's actually been, you know, taken us quite a few months to get the different folks and pieces to the puzzle at the table, but I really feel that we're in a strong place now. Thank you Mayor Pro Tim Garza, your staff providing different folks to serve on that, Councilmember Ritteria for buying breakfast at a couple of those events, and Councilmember Kassar, who attended just this past week in his district, a North Austin-focused event we had in Constable Biosteros's office. We also have a homeless services provider effort underway. Austin Public Health is a member of Echo, as well as you name them, they're a part of that coalition, and we met with them earlier this month. And one of the awesome things we have here, and you know, in this moment right now, is that we had the point-in-time count just a few weeks ago, just a week ago. And so they did exactly what we're going to have to do. The difference is, is they had one night, we have weeks. They have all that data that has come in that now shows us where the most up-to-date hotspots are, how many folks it took. So we can now take that, and now we basically have our campaign plan for how we will address that. So we're going to keep working with them on that. And then healthcare providers, this is another one that I think could be a game changer if we can get it up off the ground. Central Health convened different healthcare providers from around the Travis County area. You name them, they were there. And the ask there was that to generally get out outreach materials to their different clinics, because again, if we can deploy the technology, if we can get an iPad in that clinic lobby, if we can even just get a cricket phone in the corner with appropriate messaging on how to use it, folks while they're there in the clinic could take the census. And that is one of our best touchpoints for the hard-to-count populations. With that said, we're trying to get up off the ground an Affordable Housers CCC, so Housing Works has stepped up, saying they're willing to bring together different affordable housing providers, and then a college student CCC is, because that is one of our harder-to-count local populations. I wanted to just quickly give you examples of what our media campaign would be. Targeted digital ads. It's a little scary when you think about it, but at this point now, the technology we have at our hands is that we can literally geofence a school drop-off pickup location at the times parents or families are dropping off or picking up their kids. We can tag those phones, and we can target those phones with ads specific to that school. We can have the principal of that elementary school telling folks over that static or short-video ad, your school that your child goes to depends upon you taking the census. So that's one opportunity we have. We can also leverage this hard-to-count specific messaging that our community CCCs are developing. One of the ideas that I thought was really from our Hispanic-Latino CCC most recently was having like an evolving telenovela that's playing out based in Austin about why the census is so important. Our Asian-American CCC, their idea is it's going to be the checkout counter at one of the Asian-American supermarket stores, where someone's telling someone in line about why it's so important. You know, identifying these places that are safe and communicating the message through that means. And then our regional media plan, this again is that partnership with the surrounding counties. A lot of these counties have not had as much time, they don't have a full, you know, 40, 60-hour-a-week person working on this job. And so these assets that we develop, they can then take and use. And Williamson County and Hayes County are actually already sending members of their county CCC to our community CCC meetings, so that way they can help build that community-specific messaging. This is a quick fundraising update. As y'all know, y'all put in $200,000 in y'all's annual budget, as did Travis County. We received that roughly $60,000 from Central Texas. We'll be receiving a little over $100,000 from the statewide pooled fund. What's exciting about that is it's not even going through us, we're just sending that directly to the nonprofits. But we've been trying to coordinate with those different nonprofits as they put in their applications. For example, SAFE has put in an application to try to see if we can get technology in their shelters, because even though the Census Bureau will be out there doing their snapshot count of those quarters, folks come in and out of those facilities for services, or as life, it depends upon, you know, what's going on in life at that time. So that's the way we can catch the full breadth of that hard-to-count population. That's a perfect example where our local effort really steps above and beyond what the Census Bureau will simply be doing. And then down here at the bottom, I have been advised, we cannot fundraise on city hall properties, so I will not. That would have been fun, though. We've got a $300,000 missing mark here in terms of what I think we could really use here locally to get out the count. And that $300,000 would expand our targeted digital media universe, and it would expand our canvassing as well. Real quick, we have national and statewide resources that we're tapping into, so we're really lucky to have groups like Naleo, the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, RCount, which is a campaign of color change, a group that's focused on African-American populations around the country, and then Advancing Justice, which has been focused on translating, providing messaging for the different Asian-American communities here in the United States. What we can do is just reuse those one-pagers, reuse those focus group studies, A/B testing. We don't have to go recreate that wheel. And one of the things that has come out of a lot of their studies, especially color of change and advancing justice, is that one-pagers and bullet points simply don't work. Telling someone there's $800 billion a year at stake does not move someone in a hard-to-count population. Moves this, moves everyone in this room probably, because we all understand that impact, but for a lot of these folks, what the message testing was coming back was saying, I've already got so much on my plate, and you're going to throw these bullet points in front of me. And, you know, even here locally in different CCC meetings we've had, folks have stepped up and said, in my community, we don't feel like we're a part of the system. So when you say the system is missing out on funding, how does that impact me? So that's part of that bridge that we have to come across with our messaging. And then statewide groups, we've got several that have come together, including the Center for Public Policy Priorities, kind of under the umbrella of the Communities Foundations of Texas, which is Dallas-based. They are the group that has convened these large donors to put forward that money for the Texas Counts Campaign that our local nonprofits will be trying to draw down funds from in a coordinated fashion. This is actually something that's, just for the presentation y'all here today, which is an example of how we're going to leverage our local resources for a need we have on the campaign. I don't know if we have someone from the library, I don't know if they were able to make it out, or no, they weren't able to. That's unfortunate. They helped put together this slide right here, but this is really cool, and I think this is a game changer. They have now dedicated all their libraries to having a census workstation. What that means is if someone walks in, wants to take the census, they can walk up to a dedicated computer and take it right there. All the librarians will be trained on a baseline level how to help someone not take it, because we legally can't help someone take the census, because it's, you know, confidential-protected information, but at least walk them through how they can approach the computer and start to take it. But the really cool thing is they have these mobile pods already, where they can send out these stations that have Wi-Fi connection, you know, three to five little, you know, laptops already there, and a librarian trained to help folks who have issues with technology. So for us, the question is not, you know, whether or not this is a useful tool, it's, you know, of course, of course it is, it's where do we place it? Where are the parts of town that we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck? And then two, how can we try to replicate these pods? Again, with that, if we could fundraise some more dollars, how can we try to replicate these pods with private donors or volunteers? So moving on a little bit real quick here, this is a video that I would, I'm not going to play right now, but I would encourage, you know, everyone to click on and take a look at. This is Jolt, it's a statewide group that's a member of our CCC. They've given us permission to share it, and it's a great example of how messaging specific to a, you know, population can really make a, you know, a compelling message. And they've got a series of these that are coming out. Some of them I've even heard feedback that have made some folks uncomfortable, which I think is actually the sign of a great ad, because it's actually speaking to the concerns or those uncomfortable truths of the reality that something like the census can reveal. With that said, I wanted to put a spotlight here on our website. In fact, we've got our digital team here today who helped put this together. This is another excellent example of how the county and city can work together. When I first started this role, we had a website that someone had volunteered to put together, who she herself referred to as looked like a LiveJournal page, you know, from the '90s. And we could have gone out and paid $5,000, $10,000, however much, to try to build this out with a consultant. Instead, what we were able to do, a big part due to the city manager's office, the Mayor Adler's office, is we were able to go get existing talent within the city. So Mateo Clark back here is one of y'all's senior software developers in the Austin Transportation Department. He also happens to be, you know, a leader of Open Austin, a local organization that gets folks of tech, you know, from the tech industry who are civically-minded and puts them in positions where they can make an impact locally. So Mateo, we were able to get him from the Transportation Department, grab a graphic designer from the county. Tara Olson has been managing our content, who's in y'all's PIO, and that group has been meeting, cross-collaborating from county, city, and we have not had to spend any additional dollars. We haven't had to touch into those public dollars to fund that work. We already had that talent here internally. So this website, I would encourage everyone to check it out. It has officially gone live as of this past weekend. It's atxcensus2020.com. It's still evolving, it's still growing. It's set up in such a way that as more community CCCs come on, we'll be able to add what presence to that website. We've also got several tools on that website that I think this group in particular would like. We've got two different maps, one of which, the one on the left, that pretty green one,[1670.33] different maps, one of which, the one on the left, that pretty green one, was put together by one of our volunteers, Lizzie Shakney, from the digital team. Lizzie has a day job, but she spent her Christmas break putting together an amazing map that takes a lot of the information that Ryan had grant gathered from the Census Bureau. And what she did, and I'm probably gonna butcher the way she did this. Um, actually, would y'all, would y'all like to hear from Lizzie how she put together this, this really cool map? Is that worth y'all's time right now, or how do y'all feel about that? Lizzie, come on up. So Lizzie's gonna tell, walk you through real quick on how she used a model that State of California used to identify different hard-to-count populations and how they, how they work together.
Sure. So there are a lot of ways to predict who is going to respond to the, the, their mailing from the census. Um, and the Bureau has come up with like algorithms that are complex, um, that can help us understand where our efforts should be most concentrated. Um, and California simplified it, brought it down to fourteen, similar to the slide that Ryan showed you, um, the fourteen most vulnerable groups. So we took every census tract in Travis County, and we ranked them one to fifteen on each of these issues. So for example, with renters, the, the tracts with the most renters got a fifteen, the tracts with the least number of renters got a one. Um, and so for fourteen different variables like that, um, each tract gets a score. You add up those scores, so then the most vulnerable tracts will have the highest scores. So what you see in dark purple are the, the hardest to count tracts according to that index. Um, and so then we also break it down. What are the top five things that scored highest in that tract? So, um, so you can know if it's a tract with, um, with a, a high rate of low English proficiency note. So then you would know, you have to target some, some language-specific, um, efforts to that area. Um, if it's renters, you may wanna bring your, your affordable housers team in to, to work with the constituents they're most familiar with. Um, and so then also bringing in some different demographics to help you better understand, um, if you go door knocking in that tract, who might, who are you most likely to, to come across and what kinds of tactics, um, or messaging would be most useful for, for encouraging them to fill out the census. So that's, that's what this map is. It's breaking it, breaking down, um, some of those hardest to count demographics into, um, the smallest area that we can reliably, um, say something about. And on the left side, if you see, um, there are a bunch of options that you can select. So if you, if, if a community group, um, for example, has a lot of Spanish speakers that they want to, to send off to a neighborhood to knock doors or something like that, um, you could select a high percentage of Spanish speakers in, so find the tracts with the highest percentage of Spanish speakers, and, um, that would narrow down your field. So I don't know what John just selected, but that is an example of how this map could be used.
So y'all, as you can see, there's a lot of potential with this map. What I just did was click on the, the census tract with the highest percentage of Spanish-speaking only residents. So that helps us when we start to think about how we use our limited public dollars, or how we use our limited organizing bandwidth, where we place those dollars, where we place that organizing time. So I wanted to share that map with y'all real quick. One, just to highlight Lizzie's volunteer work on this effort, which, thank you. It's really awesome. Uh, and the other map we've got on there, if you wanna go back to the, the PowerPoint real quick, um, that, this other map that I'm about to show y'all is actually, uh, the area that I think the city can have the biggest help in. So this is a map that's much more simple. Uh, this is our public facing map. You know, that, that other one may have been what you call the practitioners. You're gonna have to click okay in the bottom right corner. So what this map is, is it shows you these large super neighborhood areas, as, you know, cut by Ryan Robinson, our city demographer. So if you zoom in on that map, what you'll see is, is you've got these different neighborhoods with these little red circles. Those are libraries. So those are places that have committed to being available for folks to go and take the census. Why is that important? Well, you could click on all those circles. It could tell you how far away it is from where you live, or maybe where a certain event is. We can also place on there events that are going on around the county, city specifically related to the census. So again, thinking about your local neighborhood association wants to put on an event about the census, where they're asking the librarians to put up one of those pod systems. All you have to do is go onto our website, register that event with our effort, and we will work to try to get those resources out to that event, and it will also be publicized on the map. So that way, as things get a little bit more hectic in the month of March, and folks are getting more involved and wanting to get out the word, we can try to remain coordinated with how these events are playing out. And then we, from a county-city perspective, can see what parts of town that should be receiving more attention aren't, which is a really important thing, I think, when you think about folks who have a lot of volunteer time or parts of town that have a lot of neighborhood organizing infrastructure already in place. They likely will be able to step up and provide that volunteer manpower, but we will need to step into other areas to make sure that they are not getting left out.
Real, real quick, um, probably about the second week of April, April, we'll begin to get response rate data by census tract. And so that will be real-time information that will map on a daily basis, and that will really give us a handle on, wow, these neighborhoods have only responded at twenty percent. We're gonna send resources to that neighborhood. And so that will be an exciting part of the process, but we are planning and to take advantage of that, uh, timely information. Thanks.
So if you wanna exit out of this browser real quick, we'll get to, I promised, the last slide of this PowerPoint presentation. Um, but I did wanna show you those two maps. Here are some, some simple ways that y'all could help out right now. And I'm asking this of different city councils around the county, same with the county commissioners and other local government jurisdictions, a calendar events in your district. So what is going on the next three months in your part of town? Are, are these events that could be helpful where we have a pod system placed up there? Um, is it, would it be helpful if we had a table there flier-ing, because you can't take the census yet, because we can still get out the word? Um, two, uh, as we produce these local outreach materials, please share them. Right now, you can go onto 2020census.gov, and you can find a whole host of national messaging. So don't, don't wait on us if you'd like to share a flyer today. But what we're trying to do is get out our own localized messaging, uh, for the census. And then three, uh, we're gonna have a Google form that goes out to council, which, that will be coming from Tara Olson, uh, on our digital team, asking for you to provide on that Google form where your hard-to-count populations are. Where do they frequent in your district? And then who are the connectors to those populations? Who's the manager of that grocery store? Who's the grandma wisdom on the block who brings folks into their home and has an opportunity to actually host an event? Who are those local individuals that but for you are telling us, we would never know that they are on the ground and could be a great resource in getting out the word about the census? Um, so those are the big three things that I would throw at y'all, that we could definitely use some help with. I've shown you that neighborhood organizing map. I hope that's useful, too, in kinda showing how we can visually make sure we're putting resources where they need to go. And then that other map, the more detailed one that Lizzie put together, I'm hopeful that y'all can use that for your own, for any purposes, because as you start to drill into that, it's, it's a really powerful map and what it can show. Um, so with that, that's our last three things, and happy to answer any questions y'all want.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilor Kishen?
Um, I, I wanted to ask, thank you, guys, both of you. I wanted to ask a little bit more about the relationship between the point in town and point in time count and the census. Is there any sharing of data there, or is it just that the census has to, has to go and redo that count?
Now, we've asked ourselves that same question. I think the biggest piece of intel that we'll get from that will be basically a, a, a map of where concentrations were then. Of course, we're, we're aware that it's dynamic. They're gonna change. Um, the Census Bureau is adamant about, we can't do the counting in the way that, you know, Echo, as you well know, is a, is a volunteer group. We go out. They have to be officially sworn as an enumerator because of confidentiality.
Okay.
But it will give us, it, it will take advantage of it, because we'll have a pretty approximate, you know, association with where concentrations are. But unfortunately, we, we can't just take the Echo count, which is widely considered to be the better of the counts. Maybe this time we'll, we'll flip that. But, um, we'll get something from it, but not nearly as much as we'd like to, in, in my opinion.
Well, so, yeah, so that's a real big disconnect, you know. Um, so is the different, the difference from the federal perspective, is the swearing of the, uh, enumerator? Is that the only difference?
It's not the only difference, but it's the big one. And the other one is, and I get this as a demographer, they wanna do it the same way across the country. And of course, we have got a much larger concentration of these individuals than in many parts of the country. We tried to get creative in 2010. It didn't work. I mean, they're kind of a one-size-fits-all, and I get that. But it's the, it's the bigger, it's the, it's the confidentiality. And, and that will also come into play as we do have some flexibility. We're gonna be able to be a little bit more creative than we were in the past. We'll be able to accommodate an individual who's homeless if they know their zip code, that type of thing. So there's a, i- i- it is a disconnect. I completely agree. But we'll take as much advantage from the Echo count, account as we can.
So can you send people to camps, to count people?
That's still to be determined. The, the Census Bureau has, has, you know, again, been adamant in, we're the ones who have, have to do the counting. You know, I'm, we've, we've, we've gone.
We, meaning?
The Bureau, Bureau staff.
Well, so Bureau staff or volunteers?
They have to be sworn Bureau staff.
Can we send sworn Bureau staff?
Absolutely.
To the, to the camps?
Absolutely. But that will be the Census Bureau doing the sending.
And that's why it's, it's so critical that we just had the point-in-time count happen, because now what Echo can do is provide us that, that, that location data that tells us where those hotspots are. And so now we, as a local effort, can help inform the Census Bureau as they go out and do that. Now, but to the root of your question, though, there's nothing stopping us from sending out volunteers to camps that they, you know, to go out there and provide flyers, information.
Yeah, but that's not gonna, I mean, well, it's, it, you, you need to connect the individual to the person doing the counting. Um, and, and so has, do you know if, if there's been a request of the Census Bureau to, to do that, to go, to go to people to do the counts?
Yeah, I mean, this is one of our big topics. We, we, we discuss it with them constantly.
But what is the specific ask of them? That's what I'm, and you can provide me this information later, if you're not familiar with it now.
No, it's, it's okay.
What I'm wanting to understand, you know, is what did we ask the Census Bureau to do specifically?
Well, they're, they're asking us, and that may be, maybe the disconnect here.
Okay.
They're asking us, where should we set up these hot, you know, where should we go out? You know, because they have a limited amount of resources, and they will go out however best they can.
Okay.
Or we can help inform that outreach as they go out to camps and other homeless sites, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that it was within their, their scope of work.
It absolutely is.
That they would actually send, uh, a, uh, a census worker to a camp.
And they've got a, a community partner specialist, whose name is Billy Horton, who is specifically assigned to this population, has been working with these different groups.
Okay.
I would love to connect you with him.
Yeah, I just like to make.
Cause he's been running the traps on that.
I just wanna just make sure that that's, that that's happening. So maybe we can talk about that more.
And so I think, um, Mayor Procham Garza said I was the next question, and it, it's good, because it, one of mine, um, leads directly on that question about the point-in-time data. So, and I, I know that, um, Mr. Malika is here as well. So in some cases, I hope that, I hope that as you're preparing the information from the point-in-time count for the Census Bureau, that there might be an effort to go back to some of the team leads in the point-in-time count. Um, the team I was on, for example, went to multiple camps, multiple camps where we didn't have necessarily participants, but we know there are multiple individuals there at some point. They weren't, either weren't there that night or didn't wanna participate in the point-in-time count. But if you went back and asked, there wasn't any way to really provide that information because interview or an observation form, not necessarily, uh, there wasn't necessarily a form for more general information about where some of those campsites were, where we didn't have interviews or didn't have observations. But right now, while it's still fresh in everyone's head, might be a good opportunity just to survey the team leads, Mr. Malika, about where those other sites were, where they maybe didn't get either observations or interviews. You know, again, and just with our team, I think there were at least three, maybe four campsites where there were multiple people. Um, and so I would definitely want our Census Bureau to be in that area, even though that may not show up on a hotspot, um, of the data that was collected.
Yeah, good morning, um, city council members and city staff. Matt Malika, Executive Director with Echo. I, absolutely, um, Councilor Togo, we're, we've been collaborating with the census folks. They came to membership council back in January, got to meet a lot of the service provider staff. I think getting them in touch with the team leads is a great idea, and we, we will bring whatever we can to bear for, um, you know, in support of the folks, um, working the census. I think, you know, our volunteer numbers were really high this year, as you know. I think in other ways, we can get folks connected that wanna participate in that work moving forward. Um, the team leads are a great resource, um, for, for the census, and I think we're gonna, we'll be able to attach those folks to, to the census folks moving forward. Absolutely.
That's great. I appreciate that collaboration.
Yep.
Um, and so thanks to the, to Mr. Robinson and Mr. Luller. I think the plan that you've outlined is really smart. I like the detail about the libraries, and I would, um, I just wanted to ask if our neighborhood centers and our rec centers and all of our other city facilities are at least gonna have materials. I would assume they would, but just wanted to offer you an opportunity to talk about kind of what the resources are that are gonna be available at some of those other city facilities.
Yes, absolutely.
And apologies if I missed it. I think you talked about clinics.
No, yeah, so the, the neighborhood centers here for Austin and the county, um, I've actually, I, so I spoke to the different neighborhood center managers several months ago, and I'll be speaking actually at the end of this week with all the different managers from Austin Public Health about that exact question. Part of the feedback they provided us, though, was, sure, you can set up a computer there, but they're already carrying the weight of the world every day in those neighborhood centers, providing different services. So the challenge on us as a local campaign is that if we're gonna have a laptop there or a cricket phone for folks to be able to come take the census while they're coming in for other services, how do we not increase the burden on those staffers there? And so some examples of how we might be able to do that is have a volunteer. So you've talked about different volunteer leads through existing partnerships. Uh, thankfully, Bruce Elfon, our tax assessor collector, also runs a very robust, you know, deputy voter registrar program with several thousand volunteers through that program. He has volunteered to tap into that population, to potentially serve as volunteers who go out to a neighborhood center, are sitting there at one. It sounds, it sounds redundant, but it, I think it will become necessary as more and more folks realize they can take the census at these facilities. But a volunteer being there to say, yes, you can take the census here. Here's the primer on how you need to do it. Here's some frequently asked questions. So absolutely, what I would love to have is a commitment from the city of Austin, uh, here in the coming weeks, to place all the different neighborhood centers and any other public facilities that we could place a computer in up on that map. So by the time March 12th rolls around, you see a sea of red on there, and you need to drill down in your neighborhood just to see how many different locations are that you could potentially take the census. And if you'd like to volunteer, you could volunteer at one of those facilities to help, you know, navigate folks how to get onto the computer and take it.
Great, thank you. Um, and then my last question, you talked about, I wanted to talk about the schools and your outreach through schools. Can you send flyers home through, through, um, the student, the packets that students, students get? What are, what beyond the kinda creepy digital ads?
Yeah.
Are available in terms of reaching out to school-aged, parents of school-aged kids?
Sure. And, and I apologize if I didn't even bring, we're, we're, we're just doing so much, y'all, and we're all, all over the place, uh, with different folks being involved. And actually, one of the awesome things I'd love to highlight is our partnership with Austin ISD. Uh, Leonora Vargas, who heads up their parent support specialists, actually brought in over seventy of her parent support specialists into one location just this last week, and trained them for over an hour and a half from the Census Bureau. And then we spent the last hour coming up with campaigns for their specific school verticals. That's an example of where we could have just done the institutional approach of sending out the flyers, right? But what we're trying to do is this grassroots strategy of asking the PSSs, what's the most effective way for us to communicate, you know, communicate with your families? Is it through events? Is it through, you know, whatever it may be? And already, that's informing our strategy, because we'll be able to put on, maybe it's a high school graduation event, right? Maybe it's an event that's already on their calendar, but then we go out there with one of those pods. So AISD is definitely setting the example. And then Maynor ISD, Del Valley ISD, Flugerville ISD, and what, then one of, what, all the dozen ISDs, what we're hopeful is that that model we can replicate within these other school districts as well.
It's, it's a, it's a known proven technique to reach parents who are hard to count through their children. So we're gonna do that, do that again. The Bureau has a robust program. I think the challenge is to take that model with AISD and scale it and have it be, because again, they're hard-to-count folks in the AISD, but without doing that same thing, Del Valley, Maynor, Flugerville, Leander, and, and, and ever, because they're, what, eleven different school districts that touch us. So we're putting focus on it, and it's a proven sort of technique to use.
And we're at, we're at a, I mean, a very unique time, you know, with issues like the census, right? And, you know, on a national level, and in that PSS training, I just wanna make note of this, one of the PSSs stood and said, do you really want me to go potentially burn that relationship I built with these families over something that I'm not even certain if it's gonna, you know, be something to be trusted? And that's a real concern. And so when addressing those types of concerns, I think we, as a local combined effort, can't just simply wash it away with eight hundred billion dollars a year, or, oh, don't worry, someone's gonna get prison time for that. We have to validate those concerns, that absolutely, you know, there, there's real fear in the community about participating in these types of programs. But the reality where folks don't participate is a much more scarier reality. And that's the kinda messaging that with the PSSs and different community CCCs we've been forming, we find that that emotional argument is the one that really hits home, that actually validates those concerns versus a very cold bureaucratic, number-focused approach. We're finding that in the schools.
Yeah, thank you. And that, thanks for the detail about the parent-teacher support specialists. I'm not sure if all the other districts have something akin to that. It may just be in the AISD, but in some of those other districts, they likely have communities and schools, or some of those other sort of trusted, trusted partners. And I'm sure you're working with those, but that seems like a great way of getting it out. So thanks for the info. Councilor Walter?
Thank you. This is really important work, and, um, I'm glad to see how far we've, we've come already. Um, I wanted to give you an opportunity to be really clear, if I'm somebody who wants to volunteer, what it is that I could be doing and how I do that.
Sure, absolutely. So now that we have our new improved website live, I can direct those folks to the Get Involved tab of our atxcensus2020.com, and there's a prompt there where someone can put in their name, email address, and what communities or neighborhoods they would like to volunteer in. And we are gonna start collecting that information. And as we develop our needs analysis, which will be in part, whether we know the neighborhood centers or other public facilities will be able to be one of our census locations, we'll start to be able to figure out exactly how many volunteers we need and where. It's the classic chicken and the egg scenario here of organizing, right? We don't know how many volunteers we need till we know how many locations we need them. And locations don't know if they're actually gonna have volunteers until we know how many volunteers we have. And so the best way for folks to help out right now is go onto the webpage and just submit that you're interested in helping, so we can start to build that universe of help as we figure out where we need them.
And a simple example might be staffing a, a pod location where we, again, we're gonna use the technique of going to where people are. Um, and so that would be just a simple example. They would go to an HEB and work it for a Saturday morning. They would, um, give, uh, uh, they would do educational materials. They might even, depending where we are in that window, have a laptop and help someone, uh, answer the census. So a wide variety of, of, of opportunities, and, and I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to use those volunteers in a, in a variety of effective ways.
Or, or set up an event, right? I mean, like, if, 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 if you've got someone who's maybe a member of a neighborhood association, a local church congregation, whatever, you know, they can, they can go onto our website and say, I wanna create an event, and can put all that information in there. So as y'all reach out to your constituents about how to get involved, please direct them to that tab, but also let them know if you'd like to set up an event in your neighborhood, the local campaign is willing to come out and help y'all in that effort.
Thank you. And, um, can you do the same for if I wanna donate? What do I do if I wanna donate?
Oh, goodness. Do we have another thirty minutes? No, uh, no, we're, we're working through that right now. So one of the really interesting things about having been able So one of the really interesting things about having been able to serve in this role with these different folks is we've been trying to figure out exactly how we have a local partnership, like the county and city, share funds and also receive private contributions. My understanding is, is that in the next week to two weeks, I don't know how much city manager's office would like to comment on this, that we should have that account set up so that folks could go online and donate. Because again, that $300,000 is not going to raise itself in the next two months. And we're expecting large corporate partnerships to step up, but then also folks who may be willing to contribute, you know, however much they can towards this effort.
Thank you. I think it'd be super helpful. We've already sent out some material through our newsletter about being employed and whatnot for the census, but would love to include information about volunteering and donating. And if you have something that's ready or can be ready soon, we would love to have that for our next newsletter. I wanted to point out another group of leaders that I haven't heard you mention. We had a group meeting of our board and commissioners, and we had a long discussion about the census and the role that different commissioners were, commissions were playing in that. So we have over 400 volunteers at the city, I believe, who are on these boards and commissions, who are, most of whom are leaders in some respect outside of that commission and are committed to helping improve the city. And I think we have access to that email list of folks. And it would be really good to get them involved, three both engaging them via email, but also maybe making sure that each of their next commission meetings, you get material to them, but for them to help source some of those places where you could go out and do the outreach. You know, my area is not an area that is hard to reach, but I had, you know, I had five or six commissioners who were already hard at work, reaching out to communities. And so I think there's a lot of people there who would be excited if we can give them some meaty things to follow up on, I think, for, and this needs to be beyond our quality of life commissions. Because I think the quality of life commissions have been dealing with the census, but other commissions haven't. So I think it would be, there was a lot of enthusiasm for those who hadn't been engaged yet on that. And then the last thing that I wanted to just ask about is if you could speak a little bit more about your outreach with unions and employers in the chamber.
Two really awesome questions. So as to the first one, we have presented a couple of the quality of life commissions through the city and through the county. Not all of them at all. Most of our organizing work has been focusing on these community CCCs, which are kind of outside of the commissions. Some commissioners serve on the CCCs, have been helping them, you know, others don't. But absolutely, I think actually our plan too, as Tara can correct me if I'm wrong, we've got a number of those quality of life commissions calendared up that we're going to be going and presenting at. So now that we have a website, now that we have a means for folks to get involved, we're going to have our kind of traveling roadshow over this next month where we go to those different boards and commissions. But I'd love to work with you to figure out maybe where some other places we can get plugged in here to the city side of things. But then to your second question about unions and chambers of commerce, we're really fortunate that locally we have an all-star called Montserrat, who, you know, serves as the, I think, Secretary of the Texas AFL-CIO right now. And she has actually been taking their own program, you know, their chapters through a kind of a statewide programming lens. She's involved with our Hispanic Latino CCC. You know, but one of the things that we've talked about is maybe going to the Central Labor Council, briefing them, seeing if they'd like to get involved on the organizing end. We just simply, to be honest with you, we've been trying to get this campaign up into a point to where when we went and met with people, we would have actionable items for them to take on versus just going and reiterating why the census is important. But we are there now. And so I would love to get plugged into more different union groups that you think would benefit from hearing this. As far as the Chamber of Commerce, they were some of those institutional partners that came on early to our Complete Count Committee for the county. And one of the tactics we're going to try to use to leverage their network is sending out a letter signed by the mayor and judge out to their membership, encouraging them to take part in the census, directing them to different resources. But one thing we've heard from our community CCCs is that a lot of the smaller, medium businesses in their community areas may not be a part of those Chamber of Commerces. So that's one of those things I would love help on kind of dicing out is how we make sure we get both the members of the chambers, but then also the businesses that are not. That seems to be one of the tough spots there.
Thank you. I just want to underscore for board and commissions, I think it's important to target the quality of life commissions, but there are other commissions and commissioners who we could definitely engage in us and want to be engaged if there's a substantive path forward for them.
So I just saw more mic lights come on, and I just want to make sure that we get a break between 12 and 1:00. So if there are additional questions, and I'm happy to recognize folks, but if there are additional questions beyond these, where, do they just contact you?
Yes, your best point of contact will be me, john.lawler@traviscountytx.gov. Or if that last name's confusing you, you can just do census@traviscountytx.gov. And then I did also want to make a quick note that we will be hosting a briefing for all of your council aides. That will be coming out through Tara Olson as well, a notice here at City Hall where aides from different council offices can come. And we're actually thinking we might make that a recurring event. So as the campaign evolves and additional opportunities come to play, or as y'all identify different commissions or different community groups that could be involved, that would be that input there. So it wouldn't be folks coming from all over the place trying to figure that out.
Councilmember Flanagan?
So I'll be quick. When should people start expecting to see these postcards in their mailboxes? Do we know?
March 12th. The Travis County will have, in waves, postcards going out. So it will take probably, I think, up to a week for all the different postcards to get out, a week to two weeks. So some neighborhood may get it before another one. One of the other really cool functions that we've been able to figure out with the Census Bureau is which neighborhoods will get bilingual mailers and which ones will not. So that actually, if we're going to do any paid direct mail as a local effort, it will be to go into those census tracks. We know that there are low English proficiency households and mail those low English proficiency households bilingual mailers where the Census Bureau is not.
And for clarity, your Complete Count Committee, John, that you run includes my part of Williamson County or does not include my part of Williamson County?
It might, my understanding is-
Absolutely, because it's city-county, and so there are about 50,000 folks who live in Williamson County who are also Austinites, and they are in the study area, and we're focused on them. Not necessarily one of the hardest to count areas, but there are lots of renters, some highly mobile folks, and so we're going to be giving that part of the jurisdiction lots of attention.
Yeah, so I pulled up the GIS maps while y'all were talking to look, because some of your maps included Wilco, and some of them didn't in your presentation. And I do have some areas up there that were under 70% in mail response. And it's not surprisingly where I have my oldest apartment complexes on the Wilco side. So I'm interested in renter outreach specifically for my corner of the world, even if it was as simple as posters we can go put up on the mailbox areas where we know every renter's going to walk through that little pavilion, be on the lookout, here's what the postcard looks like, that kind of information. And I would be certainly happy to include all my neighborhood ambassadors to help distribute those and try to put those up. A lot of apartment complexes and a lot of growth on the Wilco side. So that's important. And then the last question is, you mentioned LGBTQ as a hard-to-count population, but not as a subpopulation committee. Is there work happening with my community on this? Or should I be rattling the chains on this a little bit more?
Would love for you to get more folks geared up and excited about it. You are correct, it was not one of the priority populations when we first started out. But now that we have our five priority populations underway, and by priority, I just meant they were the largest ones, the first ones we wanted to wrap our hands around, I would love it for us to go down that entire list.
Yeah, because I met a census staffer, I think, who was responsible for LGBTQ outreach. And I also know that the LGBTQ task force has a kind of Queer the Census initiative. I met them in Dallas two weeks ago, and so I'd be happy to help facilitate that connection.
And real back, your first question, though, and your first point is really one I want to just hone in on real quick, which is whenever Lizzie did her regression analysis of those different socioeconomic variables that make a population hard to count, it was actually status as a renter versus a homeowner, which was the largest determinant whether or not you were going to be hard to count. So that's really important information for us as a local campaign and also frankly, I think, for other community leaders, that as we focus on this effort, we're not going to be prioritizing single-family homeowners. Our number one priority will be those in multifamily group residential complexes and those who are renters. Because the data shows that they are much more likely to be hard to count.
Thanks.
Councilmember Harper-Madison?
I'm pretty certain that Councilmember Ellis, her light was on before mine.
You go ahead and go first.
All right. I'm quick and easy. I was just thinking about populations of people that I didn't hear mentioned, those incarcerated persons and hospitalized people. Incarcerated people, there probably aren't the same considerations about privacy, but certain, some HIPAA requirements might prevent your ability to count hospitalized people or people in nursing homes. So just curious about the approach there.
Those are both populations that are hard to count. And the Bureau classifies those individuals as living in group quarters. And so in many cases, they won't be filling out their own form, but in the case of a skilled nursing facility, it would be a nurse assisting those individuals. So there will be very much an assist. And for what that's worth, in my opinion, the Census Bureau is pretty smart about how to do that, and they've done that. Still challenges, but it's not a gigantic population in our case, but it's large and growing. So we're cognizant of it and we'll focus on it.
And just to add on top of that, you know, again, the Census Bureau will have their own coordinated effort and resources going towards group quarters. They will get those folks counted. And so a way of thinking about this is like dorms on the UT campus or St. Ed's will get counted. Those students off-campus will not get counted. They're hard to count. Folks who are currently incarcerated will get counted in the group quarters. Folks who are recently incarcerated will be very hard to count. And so as a local effort, that's the way we're trying to think about things. And so it'd be really amazing if anyone in this room has connections or networking ability with folks who are in the advocacy space for the recently incarcerated. That'd be amazing, because I would love for us to have a focus specifically on that population here locally.
Councilmember Ellis?
Are there printed materials currently available? I know there's a lot of groups locally that may be doing block walking in the next couple of weeks with early votes starting, not for specific candidates, but just generally kind of having that neighborhood touch of being able to take those flyers. And in addition to saying it's time to vote, to also say, hey, guess what? The census is coming out and you should expect it. I think that could be a level of outreach that might be productive and didn't know if that was something that people could go grab, either at precinct offices or something like that.
Sure. And that's something we're thinking about doing this next week, actually, is printing off several thousand copies of just very basic Austin-specific information for different campaigns that are running. But in any campaign, you know, it's totally a all-partisan, you know, campaign, but anyone could participate and go and pick up a flyer. Right now, what I direct folks to is the Census Bureau's website, because it does have flyers in every language and from different perspectives. And we have printed those off for certain groups, like our Asian-American CCC. We have printed off thousands of flyers in Vietnamese and simple Chinese for them. And so we could continue to do that. But I hear you. I think there's an advantage to us coming up with a coordinated drop-off or pickup locations for folks to grab those, and we definitely want to get there.
Yeah, precinct offices, just off the top of my head, might be a good place to start because we're all kind of close to one. And then I just wanted, I appreciate my colleagues bringing up the discussions of talking to Echo. As someone who did the point-in-time count and 10 years ago actually worked for the Census Bureau doing the quality control for the address mapping, I see that there may be some unique experiences people are able to overlap and kind of maybe go through that training, knowing that I've seen where camps are in my district. I know that you have to be, you know, checked with the federal government to be able to work on their behalf. But I think that could be an extra level, especially with our constable and deputy constable in precinct three, Stacy Suits and Drew McAngus, lead the point-in-time count. You know them. I think that could be a really big win to make sure that we're not leaving any vulnerable populations out, as my other colleagues have mentioned.